The meeting minutes are April fourth, twenty twenty three special board voting meeting and board committee of a whole, as well as April eighteenth board voting meeting. Okay, then we'll move forward to the presentation of the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget update. Dr. Haller and Brian.
Okay, I think Joe is in the closet. Joe, I don't have the clicker, so you could bring up our presentation. And this is a very exciting night because we have two budget presentations. So we have the budget update and then we have the food services budget. So you know, super excited. Okay, so moving on to our budget update, if we could go to the first slide. Just a reminder that the workshop topics that we've had to date were held at each of our buildings. The last one being held at our new transportation center. And the focus was on budget challenges and changes. And the presentation that we're going to be giving you tonight is shares a little bit of a recap of that information and then some other changes that have happened since since that time. So if you go to the next slide, Joe. So we're going to begin with the challenges. So moving on to our our next slide. As we've said all along, the challenge for school administrators and for school boards is that school district budgets are built on a series of assumptions that business administrators need to make. And those assumptions are primarily focused on what the previous governor's budgets have looked like in the past. This this year, we have a new governor and he proposed a new budget, which does have some substantial increases. And but the likelihood of school districts receiving all of that funding is really not realistic. So we, when Brian put together the budget, he based it on what we received the year before. Based on information that is coming from the state, while the governor's budget, like school districts budgets do need to be finalized by June thirtieth, because this is a new governor and a different budget that's being proposed. We do not believe that this budget will be finalized until at least July. That's our hope. And at this point, we do not know what the budget will look like as far as the impact on not just our district budget, but district budgets statewide. School districts have to pass their budget by June thirtieth. So while the state may be able to delay theirs, we we cannot delay ours. And then, of course, our budget is built on economic uncertainty. What does our insurances look like? We have health insurance, auto insurance for our buses and vans, liability insurance. And the the numbers for those are not finalized until May. So that doesn't give us a whole lot of time to make adjustments. So we we don't even have those numbers as we speak today. And we're very close to having to have the board vote on a finalized budget.
Yes, my head. Those numbers, we do have the health, the health insurance in the original budget. We had roughly nine and a half percent projected increase. We ended up with an eight and three quarter percent projected increase. That saved us a whole twenty or thirty thousand dollars. It wasn't much. All done liability, we should have within the next three or four weeks. The governor's budget, I did not use last year's budget. I used what they gave to the governor based on his beginning budget to what was actually projected, which was forty percent of the increase he had asked for. So I applied a forty percent of the increase he asked for this year.
And then, of course, we we do have interest that we get from revenue and then just in general, the inflation. So if we could go to the next slide. One of the first steps a school district must take is you have to decide if you're going to raise taxes to the index. And as of right now, for twenty-three, twenty-four, for us, that was five point three percent. And we decided very early on, the board voted very early on, passed a resolution that they would not be raising taxes to the index. But that essentially is telling school communities, just communities in general, that you can raise taxes that high. Exeter, in the last ten plus years, has only raised taxes to the index once. And we do have a slide on that, so you can see that historically, what the tax increases have looked like. So if we can move to the next slide. So here is the budget history. This is where we are at this particular time. And you can see that the only time in the last number of years that the district has raised taxes to the index was twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. And it was raised to three point ten. And that was a year after you, we, there was no tax increase. And I think that that is very important for the board to to think about. Twenty-three, twenty-four, one of the goals was to create a balanced budget. And at this time, we have sixty-nine thousand plus. But as I said, some numbers are not coming in, that you don't have numbers yet on auto insurance and liability insurance. So while that is at a positive, that may not remain that way. As well as, this is based on what we think the governor is going to do, but that is not passed yet. So at this point, we, a balanced budget could mean that there is a zero percent tax increase. That certainly could be done. The budget will be very tight. You could have raised taxes upwards to five point three percent, but the district did not, decided they were not going to raise taxes over the index, so that resolution was passed. But again, if you look historically as to where we've been, I do think that that is some, that's something that you're going to, that's going to need to be considered. And we'll talk a little bit about that more through the presentation. So if we can move to the next slide. One of the reasons why that's important is because over the years, the district has not had a balanced budget. Their expenditures did not equal revenue, because they did, they were using fund balance. And what was discovered over the process of redoing the the financing of the restructuring was that ultimately, if the district continues the practice of taking fund balance to balance the budget, that will ultimately impact the standard emperors rating and will impact the the future of the district being able to to borrow money for different projects or or whatever might be in the future that we are obviously, you know, we can't predict. So moving forward, Joe. Again, right now, I think everyone is very aware that the majority of the revenue that comes from a district comes from the local taxpayers. And that that is a concern. Based on the conservative estimate that we have right now, it looks as though, and this changed a little bit slightly, that thirty-one percent will come from state revenue and grants. And two percent will come from federal revenue and grants. Moving to the next slide. Based on the governor's proposed budget, there's some new funding. But we're we're not sure what that will exactly mean for the district. There's a hope that there will be funding increases in the basic education and special education, which is what would have, would impact us the most. And we do have a specific slide on special education, which is very underfunded at this point. And then we have the level funding, which is the school safety and security fund, that PCCD grant, which we did receive this this past year. And then they're proposing funding decreases in the Ready to Learn Block Grant, which is how the district right now provides full day K, one of the ways that we use that funding, and in the pupil transportation. And then we'll have more information on on that moving forward. Moving to the next slide. This is just a chart of what our estimated expenditures are currently looking at. Not like any other district, the majority of funding, our revenue goes to paying salary and benefits. And the next probably largest chunk that we had was in our debt service. With the restructuring, we were able to move from ten million dollars down to a little over six.
Eight point three, just a little bit over six.
Moving to the next slide.
Ten percent down to seven percent.
As we showed before, the notable increases come from benefits and salaries, leasing of buses, electric, paper products, fuel, cleaning supplies, and and copy paper. And this is a result of contracts, but also just in general inflation. And later on in the board meeting, Brian, we'll be talking during the facilities portion of the meeting, specifically about transportation and busing and buying versus leasing. Moving to the next slide. As we said, one of the big impacts on the budget is the impact of special education services. And you can see what we are anticipating from our federal allocation is close to seven hundred thousand dollars. State allocation is close to three million dollars. However, the district contribution for that is close to fifteen million dollars for a total cost of eighteen million dollars. And then Mrs. Harris has a couple of things that she'd like to share with you about special education funding.
Thank you, Dr. Haller. I asked Dr. Haller if I could just share a couple of snippets with you from an article that was recently released in Education Week that Dr. Hackman from the BCIU shared with all of the districts yesterday, as a matter of fact. And it highlights some of the important conversations around federal funding for special education and why this is one of the most underfunded federal mandates that exists. So if you'd just give me a a couple of minutes here, just to read to you a couple of blurbs from this article that I thought were really important and would share some important statistics with you. So the federal government first mandated special education services way back when in nineteen seventy-five, when it was called the Education for All Handicapped Children Act. That's what you know today as IDEA. And at the time that it was mandated in nineteen seventy-five, the federal government promised that federal funding for special education would cover a portion of the excess costs that schools incurred to provide additional specialized services to students with disabilities. And the way that that was supposed to work was that the lawmakers laid out a schedule to gradually increase annual investments from the federal government from five percent of the nation's average per pupil expenditure in nineteen seventy-eight up to forty percent in nineteen eighty-two. That was the schedule that they promised and proposed. That never happened. So the federal government never followed through with the full funding on that schedule. And when to, in, when the Education for All Handicapped Children Act was reauthorized in two thousand and four as IDEA, it included a schedule of federal funding that authorized an annual investment of twenty-six billion by the year two thousand and twelve. Guess what? That also never happened. So more than a decade after that, the federal government's annual IDEA funding is just barely half of that amount. The other thing that this article highlights that is not a a well-known thing is something called maintenance of effort. It's something required of school districts by the federal government. And basically, the IDEA requires states to verify that districts either spend at least the same amount of local funds or the same amount of state and local funds on special education from one year to the next. And that's called maintenance of effort. So we have to maintain our end on the local end, although the federal government has not maintained their commitment to funding. Additionally, nationwide, the number of students who qualify for special education services has grown from three point seven million of the overall student population in nineteen seventy-six to seven point two million in twenty twenty, according to federal data. So there are more students than ever who are being serviced through special education services. And we advocate for appropriate programming and appropriate services in the district for our special education services. But we also advocate for the federal government to keep a promise that it made a very, very, very long time ago. And as a result of that promise not being kept, our local funds pick up the bulk of our special education costs. And because of that maintenance of effort clause, we're mandated to keep that local effort going.
Mrs. Harris, I seem to remember a number one in five, is that correct? Students here in the district who are served or considered getting special ed services, is that correct? I seem to remember twenty-one point something percent.
It is twenty-one percent, correct?
So about eight hundred of our students.
Yeah, it's a little over eight hundred.
Okay, thank you.
You are correct.
Moving on to our next slide. The one item, the one topic that we keep coming back to, and it's, Exeter is not the only district that is grappling with this, is the impact of cyber charter schools on our budget. And again, it's significant. So we offer our own cyber charter school at the cost of approximately a little less than five hundred thousand dollars. Where our out-of-district placements are costing us close to two million dollars. And so offering both of those or having both those schools or opportunities for schooling is costing the district over two million dollars. And this is an area that not just Exeter would like to see significant reform, but other districts would like to see significant reform in this as well. Moving to the next slide. So unfunded mandates at a glance, cyber charter schools being one of them. One that we decided to pull out was a new one to school districts this just past year. And that is a mandated training on on school safety. And while all of these trainings are critically important and best for students and maintaining safety, they are not without a cost to districts. And districts are not receiving funding for these these trainings. If you are following the superintendent's forum, you probably saw last month Andrew Pottinger's article from, he's a superintendent of Brandywine. He wrote an article highlighting the impact of these unfunded mandates specifically regarding training on school districts. And just to share with you, the BCIU, we're we're very fortunate to have Dr. Hackman and her team of educators supporting us in Berks County. And and the number of mandates is is simply overwhelming for school districts to try and manage and make sure they comply with. So they put together a a book, basically a book, a handbook of all the mandated trainings that school districts need to comply with. And this is it. It's it's eighty-eight pages. And it's, so it's a lot. And and ninety-nine point nine percent of them are not funded or we don't have a funding source for other than our local taxpayers. So I will tell you that I I shared this with Mr. Fiddler. And Mr. Fiddler said, well, you know, can't you like condense this? You know, to like, you know, share with people, you know, the impact? And I was like, sure, here it is. It's fourteen pages. So, you know, he kind of laughed, but I was serious, like, here it is, fourteen pages. But again, you know, these are really important. And it's one of the reasons why, as a school administration, we came to the board and we asked for changes to our school calendar to add in more professional development time to be able to meet these mandates. And again, it's not without a cost. So all important, teachers need to be trained, paraprofessionals need to be trained, bus drivers, custodians, like, we're we're training everybody. But that also means that students are not in class with their teachers, which is our main priority. And that is, that is a cost to not just Exeter, but other districts across the Commonwealth, other school districts across the Commonwealth. So because this was relatively new, we thought that this would be a a good opportunity to just share the impact of unfunded mandates, just by focusing in on one that's specific this year. And we've already complied. Our district was, we already complied with it. We already had our training. We did it in March. It was very well received. Our staff have actually asked for more trainings like this, and we're grateful for the support of the board with our calendar. But again, it is, it does come, it does come at a cost.
So in other words, the legislature says, thou shalt do this. They pass a law. It's a requirement, but they don't fund it.
That's correct. And I can.
They say basically, let them eat cake.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's true. And coming up, we, all of our teachers who teach ELA, English, English Language Arts, they will be required to take a literacy course. Again, great. We, you know, when you go through college, you you really don't have a a lot of practical, hands-on courses. You you do really learn this this on the job. I'm sure the course is is very well done, but it's it's ten hours. And thankfully, the BCIU has come up with a three-hour course that is also allowed and permissible. All of our teachers who teach ELA are going to be required to teach it. So we're going to have to figure out how to comply with that mandate. Certainly Dawn with the very best of intentions to make all of us better educators and support children. But there's no funding to help us do it. If you could move on to the next slide. So changes. What are the changes that we've had moving through this process? So when we started this process, we were looking at a revenue of a little over, close to eighty-five million dollars. And remember that the idea is that for a school district, your revenue and expenditures need to equal, because that's what equals a balanced budget. Whether you do that by cutting or you do that by raising taxes, that's certainly up to the local school districts. But you need to have a balanced budget. And taking from your fund balance, certainly a way that you can do that, but that is not the best way to handle that. So at that time, we were at a three-million-dollar deficit. Over the course of the last several months, our, half of a year, a lot of budget updates and presentations. We are at the point where we are at, on paper, a balanced budget with a bit of a plus, with a little bit over sixty-nine thousand dollars. But again, this is, this is built on a lot of assumptions that the governor's budget is going to pass and that we're going to receive the funding that Brian has has calculated, that some of the insurance numbers are going to come in the way that he perhaps expected them to. And so at this time, this is, this is where we are. And this is the information that we have to provide to the board. So moving forward. So breaking this down from last year to this year, again, this has not changed significantly, except for the debt service, basically restructuring. And as Dawn, you know, stated, there are some things that we simply just cannot change. And one of them is our special education costs. We have received, we receive little, see very little funding from the federal government. We receive a little bit more from the state. But the bulk of this fourteen million dollars comes from the school districts. That's something that we have to comply with. It's not something that we can change. So the things that you can essentially change as a school board is changing the amount of money you pay for your debt service, which the school district took the steps to do, which did have an impact on the budget. And then basically, the reduction of programs and teachers. That's that's the other area that you can, you can focus on when looking at a budget over, when you're looking to pass a budget. So moving forward. Thinking about that, we looked very critically at positions that we had. And we opted to not fill one of our central office positions, so that position was was cut. We had two long-term substitute positions that were in bubble classes. And because Uh, bubble classes and because of the shifting of of students moving to other classes, we no longer needed that. And so those positions were eliminated. And then we um had a position that we we did not need and we were able to eliminate. Uh, essentially through attrition, and that was at a cost savings at five hundred thousand dollars. And the these changes did not impact um anyone's job um or or programming. Moving to the next slide, so projections. So where we're at right now is. When we were going through um the restructuring of the uh, the debt service. Uh, Brian was told that we again had to stop taking from the fund balance in order to balance the budget. And um, that we were given a a negative outlook. And there were things that needed to be done in order for that not to occur. So Brian put together uh projections for the board for the next five years. It's essentially, it's a game plan as to what we need to do to either to maintain a a healthy. District budget and and financial outlook. And going in with a zero percent tax increase this year is is certainly doable. You could have raised taxes to five point three percent, you could have raised them up to the index. We didn't, we're not doing that. But moving forward, just to maintain where you are and to have this be healthy moving forward. The di- the the district is going to have to raise taxes moving forward and that the minimum is going to be two point five. And that's without having any other things change regarding inflation, salaries, renegotiation of contracts. This is where we are at this time, just based on predictions. Now, Brian, I don't know if you want to say anything more to that.
Yeah, this is maintaining, I'm sorry, this is maintaining status quo. Uh, I used an inflation factor of three and a half percent. Uh, state income, I used a three percent because what I'm hearing from the state. Is this is the last year they could give us big increases or is just going to keep us at a cost of living in the future? So I'm I'm figuring a cost of living will be around three percent next year. If it's higher, we'll still get more from the state, if it's lower, we'll get less from the state. Uh, I basically went through every line item, I shouldn't say every line item, we have three thousand line items. I went through every department's line items and and uh. Uh, figured out what percentages and things weren't changed or were going to change. We knew where the debt service is now. I also included the uh borrowing, uh, including in the debt service, the full borrowing, even though you won't. Do that to the fall and you won't have the full debt service this year, so there'll be a little bit of surplus this year. But I didn't want to present you with a budget that has a cliff and a higher amount next year, so I I used the full amount for the debt service this year and then. Forward, the only change in debt service in the future, three more years, is the change in leases. Uh, because we decided last year to lease buses. And as we decide that, it'd be over a five-year period, we'd beat to the highest amount, then we'd just constantly be renewing those leases. For the next five years, the next five, you know, so that that would cap out to that at uh almost five hundred thousand dollar figure for annual bus replacement.
So going back to what I said.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
How does your deficit continue to go up year over year, but your tax increase stays at two point five percent? Or is that a surplus?
That's a surplus.
That's a surplus.
That's a surplus.
So where's, you're saying this is with the tax increase already embedded into it?
Correct.
Okay, now I understand.
And that covers all the the contracts, uh, I think the teachers are through twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-five. By extended, you know, uh, basically the raises they were getting during that time, hoping that, you know, there won't be any higher raises. And the uh, three point four, three point three, or three point two in the teachers. Uh, or the three and a quarter on Act Ninety-three and the support unions.
And are we increasing that surplus for the fund?
Well, that that, that's what the surplus would would uh give you each year. And if you look, I I I, you know, we have a slide further down that shows what a quarter percent is or a half a percent is, or or three-quarters of percent. Uh, that's less than a half a percent of a tax increase. So you could actually, if the budget comes in the next year, use that towards the previous year, you know. Um, as a committed fund balance, you know, to cover that. Also, including in the next five years and and this budget is. An amount for, amount for the maintenance of effort, if you remember during the capital projects, there was a lot of things that. Weren't done, there could be less than fifteen years, and I built those into the budget over the next five years. So I have included about four hundred fifty thousand a year to cover those. Those items that will not last fifteen years but have to be done. And they're really, they're capitalized, you know, more, life more than five years, but less than fifteen years.
Brian, what uh, how would your projections change if we did raise taxes this year?
It depends what you did, if you raise the half percent, we'd probably be at two point one next year, probably two point one, you know, the following years.
How about a full percent?
Uh, one and three-quarter.
Okay.
You know.
Okay, just wanted to get an idea.
If you get the state to give us more, being better, but yeah.
I'll, I'll, do you have a, do you have their number?
I'm on with them like every other day right now, trying to stop them from putting more unfunded mandates out there.
But technically, you could say the other way too, right? If the state gives us more this year than we're expecting, then we're going to have a surplus and that surplus will drive down the potential tax rate for next year.
Correct, correct.
Same thing with if inflation goes up or if it goes down.
Yeah.
The electric rates go down, all those contributing factors, I mean, this is an assumption on an increase.
Right.
But it's not a variable if there's a decrease.
Yeah, and and as Christie said, uh. I worked through this a whole weekend just for the S and P rating, because at one time they're talking about downgrading, I said, no, you can't downgrade us. We had a fund balance, we've, we've never not met debt, you know, we had the ability to increase taxes. Uh, their their problem with the whole using fund balances, we did not pass a budget that was not balanced. Every budget was deliberately not balanced, even though some years we did better than that, they still said the. Board did not pass a balanced budget, and that's what their problem was.
So let's say an emergency does happen and we have to use the fund balance. What what happens, what what is the ramifications from that? Are we basically assured that we're going to move to an A rating from a double A?
Possibly, or B-plus, it depends, you know, uh. But the other thing I look at is, if we do the the rating this fall, we'll keep the AA negative. You know, they've always said that, but to look at the next three years, you know. I don't think there's anything we're going to have to borrow for, for at least the next seven or eight years.
So even if we would go into a a a lower rating, we don't see an immediate impact to.
I don't see immediate impact.
Okay.
You know, uh, and usually leases don't affect, it it's bonds or or bank loans that'll affect the the interest rates on ratings.
Okay.
So again, a a board is in a position where they're looking at a budget, again, that's built on assumptions. We're asking you because of the law to pass a budget by June thirtieth, knowing full well that. A good portion of the funding that comes from the state, thirty-one percent. Is, we're not going to know that till possibly well, well into July, which is obviously very problematic. We don't have certain numbers that are in just yet. This uh, twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four budget with a zero percent, with a little bit of a a surplus at this point. Is is where we're at today, that could look different tomorrow, depending on other numbers that that come in. Um, that's why this is absolutely built on assumptions and and Brian does a a great job with that. But moving forward. If things continue to go that the way that they're going. Most likely, you're you're the, we're going to have to recommend that there would be a a tax increase. Otherwise, the other option is to cut programs. And that ultimately means to cut, you know, personnel or or things like that. And no one wants to see thirty-plus kids in a in a class, although that's one way that you can do it. Or the elimination of music programs and sports. Um, because obviously extracurricular thing, extracurricular type of activities are going to be viewed first. Um, before you're looking at at cutting a teacher when we're an academic institution. Um, so the district has already worked through what we can do as far as debt service. Um, because that's a piece that can be managed and it was decreased. But if the if the board chooses to not want to increase uh taxes moving forward. Then the only other way to manage that is by is by cutting programs and and staff.
Just back on the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars that are um allotted each budget year that we're talking about for the next five years. It, that full amount, we have projects earmarked every year.
We, we've, in the uh. Review of the KCBA or the the facilities study, there was a little bit less than two point four million of projects that had to be done. That the lifespan was less than fifteen years.
Yeah, so that, that money projected over the five years would cut.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
That's already in the budget, you know, that that could always be dropped, but then you're going to have floors that.
Right, that's, I I I guess I'm looking at it from an emergency sense, if we, if we had to. Cut things, that would probably be one of the the other things that would go as well, would be the the maintenance is, if, assuming it's not urgent.
And if, before Mr. Quinter steps up, that was a problem, why we're looking to fix everything now, because things were. Not done in the past that should have been done. And we don't want to get in a situation where we have a bus garage falling down like we did before.
Yeah.
Yeah, and and, you know, as Brian said, you know, the. The district did do a lot of deferred maintenance over the the course of a a number of years. Um, while simultaneously raising taxes and taking from the fund balance. So, you know, now we're at a point where these things need to be done. We do have a balanced budget. Um, and so we believe that we are in a a very strong position. And it's certainly up to the board, you know, how they would like to move forward with recommendations, mostly from the the business administrator. Um, but one of the big financial pluses of this district is the standard impores rating. And not a lot of districts have the the rating that we have. Um, and that would, that would, I I don't know, it might not impact the district in the immediate future, but it could. It could impact the district at some point. So, you know, that's again, something to be, you know, thoughtful of. So moving to the next slide, oh, sure.
Just want, I just wanted to add one other thing. Uh, our unreserved fund balance is what we're talking, the fund balance is roughly five point two million, which is less than seven percent. The state says you have to maintain under an eight percent based on the school of our size. And eight percent is only twenty-three or twenty-four days. So we're roughly at twenty-two days operating in an unreserved fund balance. Now, that's if we close today and we didn't, and nothing else came in. But the way schools pay their bills, we're paying on basically a forty-five-day cycle because we get the bills in, we have to wait to the board meeting. The board approves the payment of bills and then we pay them. So we never have a cash flow problem because we're not relying on the state for the income, we're relying on the local income. Um, so our taxes go out, as long as they go out July first, we have income coming in in July and August before the first subsidy from the state comes at the end of August. So there there is a fund balance there on reserve that you can, anytime during the year, you can say, okay. You know, X, Y, Z blew up, we need to replace it, let's use that unreserved fund balance. But i- it's not much to think about as as a percentage of the budget.
So moving to the next slide, uh, because we figured that the board would be asking, well, what what does this look like? So again, the district is presenting, for all intents purposes, a balanced budget moving forward. And to date, right now, at a zero percent budget, a zero percent tax increase. You're looking at possibly sixty-nine thousand dollars surplus. Again, this is not finalized.
Can I, can I change that word from surplus to budgetary reserve? I'm sorry.
Looking at what a a point five increase would be, it would be nineteen dollars for the taxpayer. And that is for the year.
And that's based on, just to clarify, that's based on the average assessment of a hundred and eight thousand dollars.
That's correct, it's it's for the, it's for the year.
And that gives you a. Budget reserve of three hundred and eight thousand.
If the board would look at a point seven-five increase, it's, it's, I can't even see that far, that's terrible.
Four hundred and twenty-seven or.
Is that?
Twenty-eight, sixty?
I do have an eye doctor's appointment, but not soon enough.
I was going to say we have eye insurance.
Uh, I just haven't had time to get there. Um, so we're looking at twenty-eight dollars for the taxpayer, the majority of taxpayers for the for the year. Um, but because of the the number of people in the community, that would give the districts four hundred thousand, four hundred thousand dollars. Um, and then it would lessen the tax increase the the following year. Um, and certainly protect our rating moving forward. Again, we can certainly go in at at zero. But just know that plus minus moving forward or over the course of the year. And the way that the budget shakes out for next year. It's, it's probably going to be a minimum a two point five percent increase. Unless other options are taken and and those options are are looking at at programs and staffing.
We keep saying protect our rating. Our rating is only unprotected if we borrow again from our reserves, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
So if we do a zero percent and we make those decisions next year, but we choose not to take out of the reserves. We're still protecting our rating.
True, but you will have to raise taxes next year. This year, you don't ha- you don't have to.
But you just, but we're going to have to raise our taxes regardless next year.
Correct.
I mean, my issue is is that we have a balanced budget, so if we raise taxes now, we're essentially taking taxpayers' dollars. And putting it in our account, as opposed to the tax sellers, taxpayers being able to keep them in their own account. I mean, we have to look at next year when next year comes, but eh, this isn't a situation where we don't have a balanced budget, we do. So for me, we're just, we're 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 taking more than we need, and I don't know that that's a, that's a smart thing to do.
Dr. Haller, if I could just add to that conversation, I really appreciate Mr. Feig changing that word from surplus to budgetary reserve.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because one of the really important things that we have that budgetary reserve for is um unexpected special education costs. So if you recall, at the beginning of the year, I spoke to you about uh an influx of students who moved in who. Required out-of-district placements, who were already in out-of-district placements because of their complex needs. Those are students who are not budgeted for it because we don't know that they're coming. Um, and that happens every school year where there's, you know, you can never predict how many, but this year was six, and that was a lot. Um, and that had an impact and that money has to come from somewhere. So oftentimes, we will use some of those budgetary reserves to cover those costs. So I know we have money in the reserve, but I just want to make that point of. You have to also kind of remember why it's so important to maintain that fund reserve.
Uh, Mrs. Harris, do you have a rough figure for those six kids?
I don't off the top of my head, but I can. Brian, Brian, my.
Okay.
If you remember last year.
I was going to do some quick math.
I I'd use thirty percent of the government's budget, and we ended up getting forty percent of the government's budget, so we had another four hundred fifty thousand added. And I told the board that would probably be used up for specialized, those six students cost us over five hundred thousand. So.
Thank you.
Yeah, so it it ate up the extra money that we got.
And between tuition costs for out-of-district placements and then you add on top of that your transportation costs. Because you're obviously transporting to places outside of the district that you may need to add additional runs for. Students may also need specialized transportation, and we have one student whose needs were so severe. That he had to be on a van by himself in a harness. So you add all those costs on to tuition and that's how you get to the number that Mr. Feig was at. In a harness, so you add all those costs on to tuition and that's how you get to the number that Mister Fike was at.
Thank you, Mrs. Harris, um, for adding that, and that's that's again. The difficult position that school administrations are in when putting together budgets. And making recommendations to the board. Um, these are the numbers that we have on paper before us today. They might not be the pa- the numbers on paper that we have tomorrow. And certainly not within the next month when, you know, a budget will need to be passed. Um, but these are the parameters that we need to work within. Um, so. It's important that we're upfront and honest with the board because ultimately you represent the taxpayers. And you are going to have to make the ultimate decision about how to move forward with um the budget. We are simply providing the various scenarios as to what we're working with today and what we anticipate moving forward. And then also being very honest about the things that we we just simply can't anticipate because we we just, we don't, we don't know. Um, the next mandate that's going to be placed on a school district, the more other compliance issues that we're going to have. When we're gonna have an influx of students moving in, uh, which is all um needs to come out of the budget that you're passing. Passing today or passing in the next month, I should say.
Just to confirm, the the it's not shown up there, but the uh unassigned balance is still for five point two million?
Correct, I have no plan, if we have a uh. Balanced budget, we don't have to use unassigned balance, so we'll stay the same.
So, that's puts us at um at least what I got, six point two percent. To get right under the eight percent if we wanted to re rebuild. The uh the reserve amount, we'd need one point four million. I don't know, um, in the projections that you have, how long it would even take, if if that's what we're trying to get to to. To put money back into the the unassigned fund balance.
My projections were just to keep a balanced budget each year.
Okay, regardless of what.
Regardless each, you know, my, I was hired three years ago to bring in a balanced budget by a third year, and I did. And, you know, I I feel and and Christie has pushed this since November. That revenues should always equal expenditures, you know, it's. We shouldn't be spending more than we have, so that that's decisions you have to make. Uh, but, you know, that that's what the board brought me in for, they wanted to make sure we were balancing the budget and keeping. You know, our heads above water in the future. Uh, you know, they did have a fund balance before that they can use and it was planned, so I can't blame. Previous boards, it was planned, but it got down to the point that five point two million, three years ago I got here, using three point two million. That when they, if you kept that same budget, you would have lasted two years.
Do you feel five point two million is um. An a a inappropriate amount to have for.
Well, the state says we shouldn't have over. I I sort of don't agree with that because personally, you know, I I try to keep at least six months of cash, you know, in case something happens. You know, uh, I think the Government Finance Officers Association, their their recommendation is two months minimum. Uh, you know, this state has a huge, huge rainy day fund, which they. You know, they're not regulated on what they can keep aside, but they have a huge rainy day fund. Uh, they don't touch it because I think they're waiting for a downturn in the economy or something.
So, from your position, you would feel, would you feel more comfortable?
I'm comfortable where at, I wouldn't be comfortable if we were eighty percent commercial. Because if you have a downturn in the economy, you're gonna lose a lot of real estate value because they'll they'll reassess. Uh, we have a small commercial uh values and eh even during COVID and everything else. Uh, I think we have a stable employment force here, so even their their income tax has been stable or increasing. You know, so I I'm comfortable with that just because our demographics. You know, if we were up in up on the sixty one corridor where they're relying on all and uh. The uh trucking companies, I wouldn't be comfortable with that because if you have downturn in the economy, they're gonna hurt big time.
But going back to Mister Martin's point. You have worked very hard to cut us down to a balanced budget. But this year. We had enough special ed additional costs. That we would have used all of that four hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars. You have there as a budget reserve or the different uh not. In other words, that is money that we have a reputation, and I've said this before. We have a reputation of a good exceptional child program. And people come to buy homes here. Because they want the best for their child. And that if their child has is diagnosed with a problem. They're gonna go where they get the best service, their school districts discourage people getting. Their services for their exceptional child, we don't. So, it uh. You know, when you have a nice ballot and balanced budget. And you don't put anything on. That means next year we go in and suddenly we've got another half million dollars that we're spending that we didn't budget for. So, either our fund balance goes down or the increase goes up. More than that two and a half percent that you're predicting.
Mrs. Harris, do we have anybody that uh, do we have any pupils that are aging out this year? Of the system, of the specialized system, I'm sorry. Yes, we have seniors who are graduating who are in special education. And we also have incoming early intervention students coming into kindergarten. Right, how how is that looking right now? We have. I mean, about equal or is it looking? Oh, I don't know. Yeah, I don't know. But I mean, our our percentage of special education students has increased. Over the last few years, um, but that's not necessarily just a variable of people moving in, that's also a variable of. Identification and referral, so it's kind of more than one thing you're looking at there.
Mister Fike, I had a question about fund balance. You know, uh, what I'm hearing you say is that you'll maintain the same amount in fund balance going forward. That correct, but then. How do how do districts increase money in their fund balance? You know, and here's my, here's my question. What will happen is, I mean, if you maintain the same amount and your overall budget starts to go higher, you know, which it will. Every year, the actual percentage of money that you have in your fund balance goes down every year unless you find a way to replenish, so. What's the plan for replenishing money in the fund balance? I mean, we know how to get rid of it, we've done that pretty well. But I mean, how do we?
The board can specifically commit uh like surpluses or I'm calling budgetary reserve. To future, to decrease future tax increases or budget increases. Uh, this board has committed before for future pension increases. Back in, I think, two thousand eleven when the pension rate. Contribution rate was less than eight percent for schools and they were raising it five percent a year until we got up to the thirty five percent. You know, so those five percent a year is a lot of school boards were. Uh, committing fund balance for use of the future pension increases. Uh, you can also. Commit it to future special education. Now, the the problem when you commit it, uh, and this happened to, I think it was Lower Marion. They committed for future pen- or tax increases, but they kept on increasing taxes and never used the committed funds and. They got sued and actually had to return it to taxpayers. So, you do have to use those committed funds over, I think it's a five year period, correct? Sharon, or start to use them, so you can't just put them in there for perpetuity. Uh, you can also transfer uh funds to a capital projects fund. But you can never transfer back from the capital projects fund. So, where the committed fund balance in the general fund you can use for to offset future increases. So, that's how that you can increase your fund balance for special purposes. You know, like right now, there's, I think, eighty two thousand has been spent. Within a year, that's still committed for radios for the buses. That they committed five years ago and we're making sure we get those radios in. You know, once we decide if we want cameras or not, because it's sort of intertwined with cameras and radios. So, did that answer your question? Thank you.
And another way of doing it is the economy during the year. In other words, we have a budget, but if we can convince the art department that they don't need the. Twenty thousand dollars of what their commitment is, and I'm pulling figures out of the air, I have no idea. But if we can realize the savings within budget lines, that can also be committed to the uh. To the unassigned reserve.
Right, I I mean, at the end of each year, if you have an unspent budget, we can transfer it to next year budget, but the. The board can assign that to a a committed committed fund or a budgetary reserve for the future.
So, moving moving on to the next slide. So, the remaining steps now for the board, if we can go. So, the board must adopt a proposed final budget by May thirty first. What that looks for, this school district is that our next voting meeting is May eighteenth, so you will. Uh, be asked to do that prior to the May thirty first deadline, but it has to be done by May thirty first. According to the state, you have to adopt your your final budget by June thirtieth and adopt. Your annual tax levy resolution and our board meeting, our voting meeting is June twentieth. So, um, you have to the thirtieth and our our meeting is on the twentieth. And then by July first, the school district needs to um be prepared to um. Turnover information to the tax collector collectors here in the Exeter Township School District, that would be. Exeter Township Tax Collector and the Saint Lawrence uh Tax Collector. So, that's the um remaining steps that the school district has um at this point. Um, on May eighteenth, we.
That's actually May fifteenth is our next voting.
Yeah, we made it the day before the.
I'm sorry, I, we made a mistake when we put that on there. Um, so we are, um, this is, this is where we're we're at, so. Um, Joe, if you could go back to the the slide where we show the budget, um, yep, right here. So, as of right now, this is the the budget as it stands, the the breakdown of of the numbers, the whole numbers. Um. Budget reserved at sixty nine thousand, which that's where we are today with a zero percent tax increase.
Can I make a comment? So, on May fifteenth, unless you decide to have a later meeting, the budget you'd be uh. Voting on would be a proposed, the proposed budget has to be then advertised. For the public to be able to inspect at least twenty days before your final vote, which would be June twenty second or whatever the June date. Uh, between May fifth or the May budget meeting and the June budget meeting. You know, you can still make changes, it's not the final budget or the final taxes. But you have to be able to, the public has to be able to see the full budget, which is what we do on a. They call it P D E twenty twenty eight, which is a state budget report that breaks it down by uh. Fund function and object, objects are like your your expenses, your supplies, think, you know, all the way down to uh. You know, salaries, benefits, it doesn't break out by individuals, uh, but that's up for public inspection. Uh, so then you'd actually adopt your final budget in June. But if you use the June meeting, is it June twentieth again? Right, if you use the June twentieth meeting for your final adoption, the budget has to be. Advertised and open for public inspection twenty days before, so, you know, if you're. May thirty first is the last day, you can actually schedule another meeting to adopt the budget if you don't want to do them the fifteenth, but. You know, the fifteenth is basically, this is where we're at, this is what we're proposing, you know, this is what we're gonna vote on or or change for the following month.
So, at this time, uh, that's where we are with the budget. Um, and again, we wanted to share with you various scenarios, uh, so you have all the information that you ha- that you need moving forward. Uh, and we are optimistically hopeful. That uh we will have some more information from the state to be able to share. Um, but without that, these are the numbers that we have to present. Um, so at this time, we're gonna move into the food services budget, which is a. Little bit different, a little bit easier, and I'm going to turn that over to Brian.
And before Tim, before Tim says anything, Joe, can you move the next slide? The food services budget is funded by federal and state revenue, sixty five percent. With the remaining thirty five percent from meal charges, and we're talking meal charges, student charges, events, things we charge out for food services. It is totally separate from the general fund budget and no local tax dollars support this budget. I think I got caught before in a long conversation and then when I said it was food service, I was told to open with that, so I wanted to open with that this time. And Tim said yes. So. For the last fifteen years, the food service budget has never needed any money for the general fund. By law, if there's student debt, the general fund's supposed to pay that off, but we've been lucky to have a very generous. Uh, local population and giant and the women's club donate money to people that can't pay their debt, so. We've never had to subsidize the the food service budget. Uh, the food service budget actually has a surplus in their fund, which has to be used for equipment down the road. Uh, food service can never go back to the general fund. Uh, Joe, if you wanna move to the next slide. Uh, so like I said, it's only thirty five percent or less, that's local revenue, if you wanna call it. Like in in the general fund, but it's actually just sales and interest, uh, the interest went up this year by about twenty five thousand. Uh, state revenue is a hundred and twenty four, federal revenue is one million, three hundred fifty seven thousand. Uh, this year coming, the expenditures will be one point two million. Uh, it's roughly a two hundred or almost a three hundred thousand dollar increase from the previous year. Uh, which is also the increase in in revenue uh from the previous year. The. What do we have, difference? Is about three hundred seventy one thousand, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one, uh, two point two million. Wrong side, so the difference is about six mil- six thousand eight hundred thirty four thousand to the plus. That's assuming we have a full staff in all our kitchens and kitchen help. Uh, this year, we haven't had that, we've been paying overtime, so we we stay within budget, but we haven't had a full staff. We've been able to find and fill people towards the end of the year because the new uh. Food service uh union contract came into effect and they had a substantial increase in wage with the the union, so we were able to find people. If you wanted to go to the next slide. So, basically, supplies in this budget's almost fifty one percent. I'm talking supplies, that's food, paper, you know, oil, cooking, whatever it takes to to cook and the the actual. Uh, the food itself, the meat, the milk, everything. Benefits and salaries uh roughly take up forty two percent of the budget. And other purchase services like uh pest control, um, maintenance on the equipment, things like that. Uh, roughly three or four percent. Uh, property is also part of that maintenance or equipment, they're, they buy a couple new things every year. Uh, this past year, they bought uh a new, I don't know if anyone's been to high school, they put a new line in at the high school. At the junior high, they put in a really nice new serving line. Uh, I don't like the setup at the junior high, but it it looks a lot better, it's a lot easier. The reason I don't like the setup is you have to cross the hallway from the kitchen to the serving area. But I think the kids like the the improvements we made this past year. Uh, Joe, if you wanna move to the next slide, so. The federal government highly reculates food services. Uh, we just went through an audit, uh, we came through a fine, you know, flying colors. Um, but they also constantly are adding more reporting and monitoring. Uh, so this year, we're recommending the food services supervisor title be changed to director of food service. In addition to the title change, we're recommend recommending that she move from a two hundred and twenty day person to a two hundred and sixty day. Uh, it started in the beginning of the year with the extra reporting and requirements, she would actually be out of days before the kids. She would actually be out of days before the kids finish school this year. So moving her to a full-time position, as with the secretary in office, moving that person to a full-time position. This coming year, they're upping the income re, or should say income requirements for free and reduced. And they're not, they're, they're saying they're still reduced students, but the reduced students will also be free. So there's a lot more reporting for that. I don't know if we, Joe, if we can go back one slide, two slides. Twenty one, twenty two, everyone was free that year. We actually made a profit that year because we get a higher reimbursement from the federal government for everyone that's free. And if you look that year, we had over three hundred seventy one thousand dollar profit. Now that profit stays in the food service and it has to be used for equipment and things down the road. But Joe, if you can go back then, so, you know, there, there's more reporting on that end. So we are recommending changing those two positions to full-time instead of two hundred and twenty days. And I do want to say it's out of food service, it's not out of general fund. Federal increase, federal revenue increased due to inflation. This year, they gave us additional supply chain reimbursements. They plan to do that next year also. We also get donated commodities from the, the government warehouses like cheese, milk, fruits and vegetables. We're trying to get on a, a local farm to table grant program. We're actually use local farmers, you know, during the seasons, raffles and things like that, which they'll pay for the difference to buy local and have to go through the, the federal curbin area. Meal prices are set using a paid lunch equity tool, PLA tool, we call it. Every year, we have to determine if we're within the, the proper amount what we're charging students is what we're getting reimbursed from the federal government. I think we were getting three dollars and forty cents a meal last year. I gotta look at what's been increased during COVID or, or during this past year of supply chain. But the, the tool basically tells you, okay, you have to raise five cents or ten cents to be equitable that we're charging the, the paid people, what they're paying us for the unpaid people. But they have a caveat. If, if the tool says you only have to raise nine cents, then you have to raise yours five cents. But the maximum you'd have to raise your meal prices of ten cents in any one year. I have a feeling we're looking at about a five cent, but I'm probably within the next week or two, I'll have the, the meal prices for next year. That's basically the food service budget in a nutshell. Want to have the final numbers. That does not have to be adopted by the end of the school year. You can adopt that the next meeting if you want. That's totally up to the board. The board's main responsibility and, and school code is general fund. But you're also responsible for food service fund. Any questions?
Just one, Brian, you mentioned a, a federal audit?
Yeah, we, 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 I think it was January through February, they actually had to come back three times. And it was extensive. They wanted to make sure every ingredient we used or, or bought met their guidelines. So they came in, observed several breakfasts and several lunches at different schools. I'm sure some of the principals remember Courtney being out there all upset. But she had a book this thick of every, you know, ingredient of the things we bought, you know, the, the backside says ingredients. And they wanted to look at the, the allowance and the percentage of daily and, and the grams to make sure we were still within the federal nutrition guidelines.
Is there a report, an audit report?
We got a verbal and there'll be an, an actual one coming up probably the next month or two.
Okay.
Usually it's, you know, pre-COVID, it was within two months post-COVID.
Sure.
It's like seven or eight months.
Well, the reason I'm asking, whenever it comes, could we get a copy of that?
Yeah.
Also the public, I want, I want to be sure.
Yeah, and I, I have to say Courtney does a great job. Our staff does a great job in our food service department.
I think it's, we keep it open and let the public see just how we did.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Brian, are you wanting us to move this forward to the next voting meeting?
If you so desire.
Is the board okay with that? Any issues? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the report. Okay, we won't be amending the agenda tonight, so we're going to move to education. Dr. Battler.
Thank you, Dr. Herring. It is recommended that the board of school directors approve the following list of staff conferences. Is there any discussion? Nope. Okay, moving on to item B. It is reported that the following field trips within the sixty mile radius have been approved, one, two, and three. Any discussion? Moving on to item C, it is recommended that the board of school directors approve the following field trips beyond the sixty mile radius. Number one. Any discussion? No. Oh, forgive me, that went sideways. It is recommended that the board of school directors approve the teacher in the park or TIPS contract as attached for the fully inclusive TIPS programming option at the flat rate fee of eight thousand dollars and a per student cost of three hundred and twenty five dollars for approximately one hundred and fifty students. Cost of TIPS will be paid through ESSER funds for the twenty-two, twenty-three summer program. Cost for parents is a hundred and twenty five dollars for the summer. Scholarships will be provided based on need. Open to discussion.
I have a one question, Dr. Battler, if you can answer it, or Ms. Harris, or Dr. Heller. These scholarships that are being provided, is that offered by TIPS or is that offered by the school district?
They're, oftentimes are offered through the, the, yeah, through APTs, private, private donor, donors. Students who are in need or are Title One students, the district typically covers the cost for those students. This is for other students that may, that may not qualify under different circumstances, but might need that financial support in order to attend.
Do we know from past summers roughly how many kids, families weren't able to, for, just so we have a picture of what the need is?
Well, Mr. Hathaway is actually, is actually here and I, I did want to say a couple of things about him. If Matt wants to come up to the podium, that would be helpful. But it's my understanding that TIPS has never turned a student away, that the, the, the individuals who work in TIPS under Matt have always found a way to support students, families who want their children to attend this program. That's, that's one of the keystones, cornerstones of, of Matt's mission. And if Matt could, you know, talk a little bit about that, that would be helpful.
Matt, could you turn on your mic?
I don't think it's on.
Okay.
All right. The percentage of, of students actually receiving, for example, Title One grants has changed over the years depending on the way that the programs are funded. So we were up to one hundred percent of the children attending for free a couple of years ago because that's the way that students were allowed to participate in the program. Historically, the children who participate in our programs, roughly sixty percent of the children don't actually pay to participate in the program. And the remainder pay to offset the costs of the community and the district.
And, and this year, as we said, we're fortunate that we still have ESSER funds that we're able to use for TIPS. And that is our intention to use those funds. But moving forward, this is the challenge with providing support for students in the summer because there isn't really funding for it, but yet we know that it's critically important for our, our students to stay engaged over the summer. But it also needs to be realistic for families to be able to, to afford because summer costs for summer can, can be very high for various camps. And Matt and his team, along with the school districts, have done a really good job to make it something that is exciting for kids, enjoyable, being at the Antietam pool, but also being affordable. Having said that, as everyone knows, Matt Hathaway is now one of our building principals. But TIPS is a, a grassroots program here in, that he started in Exeter as a teacher. So we just wanted to make sure that everyone knew that there was not a conflict of interest with TIPS coming to the board for approval, because Matt receives absolutely no compensation from it. So, and we, we made sure that we vetted it through our school solicitor. But the TIPS name is very, very much associated with Mr. Hathaway. And we certainly just couldn't imagine having a program that started in Exeter not be able to be in Exeter. So we wanted to seek a way that was appropriate, ethical, vetted through our attorney to ensure that everyone was clear as to how this was, was being handled.
I see that with the contract, we have an option of a one-year commitment or a three-year commitment. Is there a reason why we're just doing one?
Mr. Pike?
Funding. This year, and depends when they start next year, there might be a little bit left over. If they start before July first for ESSER, but my ESSER funds runs, the last of the ESSER funds runs out June thirtieth.
Have we done this every year? Have we used TIPS every summer?
Well, since I've been here, you've been using federal money for TIPS. We, we did it with the, one year, we had that full summer school program and TIPS in the afternoon. I think before that, they had TIPS as a half. I think half were free and half were a hundred dollars that parents had to pay, I believe. That was the year before the, the summer school, right? And last year, I think the board came up with this, we, we came out with some extra money to pay for just the program over at Antietam.
That was through ESSER as well last year.
Right, a little bit of ESSER, yeah. And that's one thing the ESSER funds allows for is summer learning. But we just have to make sure if we do that, you know, all of our demographics, you know, from K through three or K through four are offered.
So, so you're, okay, so we have to, we have to hope we have the funding.
Say after June thirtieth, next year, we don't have the funding, that stream anymore.
Okay, so we just have to hope that something comes in? Or is that something that we would budget for? You, you know, these numbers go over my head, so I'm sorry.
Budget for, or we go after private?
Because it just seems that if, it's a lot less to do a three-year commitment, it would make more sense to move forward with that than the one year.
Yeah, I, I looked at it, but I don't think ESSER would allow me to pay it upfront and when it's not being used during the time. I, I might be able to get away if they started in June and went through the summer, but, you know, not for the following years.
Do we have to pay? So that, that fee every year has to be paid right away if it's a three-year commitment?
Well, they, they use the ESSER funds, it would have to be, I, I guess they call it earned that year, you know. It could be earned if they started in June instead of July.
Dr. Herring, to answer your question, we've been in it since it started.
Since two thousand and four.
And although we've had superintendents that made it difficult, we've had less enlightened people on the board who threw some obstacles in front of it. We've always managed to get through it, so.
So we, we would just need to, next year, now moving forward, that, you know, when we get our, our federal money, because so many of our students are, are under Title One or ESL students, that's, that's a portion of the budget that we, we get a certain allowance for. And then we, as a school district, have to determine what basically buckets we want to put that, put that funding in. And TIPS, summer learning is something that we have chosen in the past. We haven't needed to do that the past several years because of the ESSER funds. But it would be our goal to, to do that again, go back to that, but also look for other grants, other opportunities that we could apply for to offset the, the costs as well.
Mr. Hathaway, have you ever accepted or sought out private donations to, to fund the summer program for, just for Exeter, I guess?
Yes, prior to two thousand and fifteen, the entire program was at zero cost to the district. At that point, the, the Exeter hired their own employees. And prior to that, the Exeter Community Education Foundation actually helped to host the dollars and then reimburse the district based on the combination of private contribution, parent contribution, and then donation from the foundation itself is the way that it ran. Around, I don't remember the year, maybe two thousand and seventeen, it was decided that the district would not participate that way. So we became a nonprofit at that point to be able to subcontract the service. And now Teachers in the Parks does all the hiring, for example, which is where a lot of those costs are coming in because we pay like our own payroll service to provide that service. A couple of options that I would, I would make a suggestion to consider would be things like twenty-first century funding is allowed to be spent in summer learning, but would also have to have an after-school component as it stands right now in Pennsylvania. Actually, EITC dollars were actually allowed to be spent over the summer, if you note them as different than your regular programming. And then there's a lot of other federal forms of revenue. But yes, this has always been a community that's supported Teachers in the Parks with thousands of dollars to offset the costs. Right now, we are operating, even at that number, roughly twenty percent of a typical program offering certified teachers at contracted wages, so.
What happens if we go over one fifty? I thought we had this conversation last year that there was a chance that we could go over a hundred and fifty.
And I believe we did. It was just that per pupil cost. We would have to discuss with the district if they wanted to allow that. Based on the fact that it's May, I think one fifty is a good number. But next year, I think we can get started earlier and I think that we could get back to roughly three to five hundred students as we have before, if, if that's something the board was interested in doing. Thanks.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, talking about the total number, Matt. Last year, I think the township operated a fairly reasonably priced summer program for kids. But I don't think that's happening this year. They've, they've outsourced it to the Y or something like that. And I think it's much, much more expensive. It may be actually cost prohibitive for a lot, a lot of families. So you may get an increase in your student enrollment as a result of that. It's just my thought. Something to think about.
My, my understanding of the YMCA program, at least doing some or hearing from others that have done their, the investigation, is that education component is lacking on there, even though it was originally touted as a summer slide, you know, a type of proposal for, for that component. But, yeah, I, I don't think it's up to the standard of, of what TIPS is offering.
I, I would just say I don't know anything about the YMCA program. I know that they operate for more hours than we do. But I would argue it's very difficult, especially when hiring, you know, teenage, teenagers or, or, or very young people to provide that, the same thing that a certified teacher can. I would love to find a way to get back into Exeter Parks. I think that partnering with a YMCA or a township is a really nice way to do that. It kind of complements their, their services as well. And that's what we advocate for when we have the opportunities to present. Right now, we're, we're very pleased with the partnership that we have with, with the Antietam Pool and the facility they can provide.
When, when was the latest time you were able to use the, the township parks?
That would have been during the Tips and Talons program, when they offered no, no programming because of COVID. We were solely allowed to use that facility.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to be clear that if we get to one fifty-one, we're not turning a student away.
No, this year in particular, like we said, we have ESSER funds, but we looked at what the enrollment was last year and it was a little over one sixty. We gave that basically as a, as a minimum number. Like I said, we have ESSER funds to cover it this year and it gives us some time. Now that we feel like we can re-establish a solid relationship with Matt and TIPS and we feel confident moving forward that it's not a conflict of interest, it'll provide us more time to work with his board to plan for the future and expand the program and really get some solid funding in place and work, work really together as a team to ensure that this program stays put and, and grows to benefit our students.
Dr. Heller, can I just request too? This action, this board action is simply a contract and a fairly simple contract with not much detail in terms of the program. Is there some way we can also add as an attachment to the agenda for the voting meeting, a description of the program? Like, for instance, what are the age levels of the kids? How many students in each? You know, per teacher, what's the length of the program? What, what's the con, general content? You know, per teacher, what's the length of the program, what, what's the con, general content? I think that would be helpful. If I'm a, somebody who's looking at this from the outside, I'd like to know what this contract actually represented and what it meant.
I, I'd be happy just very briefly to say, uh, we're servicing, uh, students coming into kindergarten through going into fifth grade this year. So that would be our current pre-K through fourth grade students. Uh, we don't staff in more of a ratio than one to ten. So we'll have one certified teacher to ten children, um, at the pool. Um, the program will run for six weeks, uh, Monday through Thursday, um, from roughly nine o'clock to eleven o'clock or nine thirty to eleven thirty. Um, so that's just a very general, so that the board is aware, uh, but I'd be happy to get that information for you.
Yeah, I think that's helpful, but I, you know, I do think it would be nice for anyone who's, you know. Looking at our agenda and trying to get a sense of what TIPS means and what it's about, to have a, a program description would be good. Good, thanks.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
I want to say I'm very excited that TIPS is gonna be here. I think we're gonna get a lot of people coming at us with that.
Okay, moving on. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves tuition agreements between L One Opportunity School and the Exeter Township School District. Provide extended school year services for, uh. The following student for the period June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three to August third, twenty twenty-three. At a rate of two hundred and thirty-nine dollars per day. And this following student for the period June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three to August third, twenty twenty-three at a rate of four hundred and four dollars per day. For a total of fourteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Is there any discussion?
If I could just say, Dr. Butler, just a reminder to the board, this is the time of year that you'll see. Several extended school year contracts on the agenda. These are the services for our students who are in out-of-district placements who qualify and meet the state criteria. For some services over the summertime.
And following what Dr. Harris said, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves a tuition agreement between Davro Foundation. And the Exeter Township School District for special education services for the following student beginning January twentieth. Through June thirtieth. Of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year at a cost of three hundred and twenty-five dollars per day. For a total cost of thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. Also, if there's no discussion, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves an agreement between Richard J. Karen Foundation. And the Exeter Township School District to provide student assistance and wellness programs. For the period of July first, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. At a cost of fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars. Any discussion?
If I may, Dr. Butler, um, regarding this item and the next item, the agreement with Inspired Wellness. Um, so, uh, if you recall, annually, we renew our, um. Agreement with Karen Foundation for Student Assistance Program Services. Historically, we've used the Karen Foundation to provide those services from kindergarten all the way up through grade twelve. This year, we're proposing, uh, for, for next year, we're proposing something a little bit different. We're going to use two organizations. To be able to provide those services. That's the Karen Foundation and then, uh, an organization called Inspired Wellness. The reason we're splitting up services is, um, you've heard me talk about other, uh, special ed services, other mental health services. And behavioral health services, uh, in terms of consistency of staffing. And making sure that we actually have bodies here to be able to provide those services. Well, that's something that we've struggled with a little bit with the Karen Foundation over the past couple of years. They've struggled, they lost a lot of staffing during the pandemic, and they're struggling to rebuild their workforce. Um, so the, the sort of motivation for splitting this contract was truly to make sure that our students. Had guaranteed services at the start of the school year next year. Um, happy side note to that, um, in our exploration of splitting up these services, um. This ended up being a cost savings of about twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars. Uh, in this proposal of splitting the service between these two organizations, but I do want to be clear, that wasn't the. Uh, driving force behind this. The driving force behind this was to make sure that we had services from the first week of school for our kiddos. Um, I was fully prepared to explain to you the services we're getting from the Karen Foundation and from Inspired Wellness tonight, but. Mrs. Leonard's gotten a little taste of the microphone over there at the podium, uh, in the past couple of weeks and. So she asked if she would be, be able to be the one to explain what Inspired Wellness and what Karen are providing to us. So the floor is yours, Mrs. Leonard.
Uh, chief contract negotiator.
So. So I think what I just wanted to tell you about the Karen Foundation contract is that. The way we've been using it the past couple of years, we've really only been using it for. Fifth grade up, um, because we haven't had staffing. So what is happening with K through four, we've just been piecemealing. So what's great about Inspired Wellness is that they'll be able to do a lot of things. That we haven't had in about three years, which is psychoeducational support groups. Our school counselors are already providing a lot of those at, from the K through four, but they don't have enough time to do all of them. And so this is really the biggest benefit is. K through six with the psychoeducational support groups that Inspired Wellness is gonna be providing. And then we'll still have a full-time secondary SAP specialists that will be doing. Um, the behavioral health assessments, we'll be attending SAP meetings, we'll be running groups and specialty groups and. Doing presentations, so all that'll still be there like it was, but it really helps out the K through six.
Mrs. Leonard, can you give in, some examples of some of the groups that they run, just so folks are familiar with what you're referencing?
Yes, so school counselors right now through K through four, they do like some friendship groups. Some different social skills groups, some things with like anxiety or controlling anger, controlling emotions. But they have limited time in doing them, so Inspired Wellness will come in. They'll run some of those groups, but they'll also be running groups for grief and loss. Um, they'll be running groups for children of alcoholics and addicts. Um, they'll be running groups for divorced families or changing families. So they'll be doing a lot more groups, um, in addition to also doing some of the same ones that the school counselors are, but maybe can't fit in.
And can you talk about some of the groups that the Karen Foundation runs at the secondary level, like our, uh, cessation groups?
Yeah, so Karen does not only, um. They run not only like teen issues groups and anger management groups and controlling angers, but they also do Project Connect. Which is our nicotine vaping cessation group. So they run that and that's huge, um. That's a really good group and it, we've been running them. This year, we've had. An increase in parents that wanted their kids to get those groups, so we have actually two Karen representatives that are in right now. Were in those groups because of the need for the nicotine cessation.
Thank you, Mrs. Leonard.
Thank you.
I don't even know if I need to read the recommended for Inspired Wellness, but, um. So we are going to be moving A, s- well, everything online to the voting meeting. Sorry.
All set there?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Finance, facilities and audit, Mr. Mall.
Thank you, Dr. Herring. The first item is item A, uh, to authorize the participation in the Burke County Joint Purchasing Board. For the following bids for fuel, classroom and office supplies, art supplies and medical and nursing supplies. Any discussion? Okay, moving on to item B, um, this is to accept a donation from Oz Group. Uh, the list of donated items is attached. Any discussion?
Yeah, I, I like that. Uh, Oz Group purchased a, a garage or facility that was one of the old. Transportation companies for Daniel Boone that went, uh, you know, sold off their business. Uh, they donated to us, they, they basically said, what's in the garage you can use, you can pick out, make a list. Uh, what we prefer is if you give us a donation letter so they can write it off on taxes, and that's what this is. We've already picked up all this. This is spare parts for buses that we can use. Uh, I did notice they missed one thing, so on the voting meeting, there'll be a second letter. Uh, there was a chairlift, a brand-new chairlift, uh, for a bus that was worth fifteen hundred. We don't need it, but we have chairlifts, we could use the parts if, if one of ours go bad, so. Uh, I'll add that for the voting meeting, a second letter, but, uh, this is basically. Allow me to give them a donation letter so they can use it for tax write-off and, and a thank you.
Why did they come to us with that?
Uh, he, he, Birdsboro, he knows people, you know. Friend of the district, I guess, you know. Support your local schools, like we were talking earlier, there's a lot of people that support our schools.
He knows the guy.
It was, it was a cu- it was a community member, uh, an Exeter. Community member, a parent in the district to, uh, notified. A, a school board member who shared with us and then we were able to make the connection and it worked out and we really appreciate it, so. Mr. Morgan.
I, I don't que- I, I never question when someone gives me something for free that we can use.
Oh, that's, that's, that's fantastic. All right, moving on to, uh, item C. Uh, this is to, uh, discuss the options for the purchase of buses for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Uh, yes, uh, right now I have five buses that are two thousand and seven vintage, uh, which are gonna be going off this coming year. For reimbursement. Uh, we had scheduled this, this coming year to replace four buses. Um, we have two that we ordered last year that are finally coming in in September. Uh, if we order buses shortly, we should have twenty twenty-fives, they're telling me, in seven months from now. Which would probably be January, February timeframe. Um, the. Well, last time we, we did not, uh, purchase propane buses because their. Lead time would have been in January this year. Now we'll say they're, they're being able to. Supply extra buses in January this year because the, the, uh. L P G propane engines are all be manufactured now by Ford and they expect to have them off the line in December. Meet the, these, the, uh, past years and then be able to take new, new orders. Um, the price for, on, on a Sourcewell, uh, contract, which is a state bid. Uh, the Bluebird conventional type C school bus, seventy-seven passenger. Is a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, the Sourcewell discount is thirty thousand, five twenty. So roughly it'd be about a hundred and twenty-eight five. Uh, the state just opened a grant program for low emission and zero emissions, you know, for, uh. Uh, purchasing buses, uh, the zero emission, the electric, they're running in the four, four fifty range and they're talking about two hundred and fifty thousand. Grant towards that, or propane bus, uh, there, I think it's thirty-two thousand. Per bus we qualify, we, there might be more, but normally that's on need and we don't qualify on need because we, you know, we're hard. But that would actually bring the, the price of the propane down under a hundred thousand. Um, I can get the actual quote and start the grant application for the propane, but. Uh, I think that's, if we're talking for buses, we're about four hundred thousand. Uh, have a hundred and five thousand in addition for a lease. With the way interest rates right now might be less than, you know, ninety-eight, ninety-nine thousand, add to the lease. Uh, but if rates go up, the lease cost might go up further. Um, and I think Mr. Quinter asked about, talking about leases too and, and the purchase of buses, so. You know, I'd said earlier, we're gonna be talking about buses, um, is it the board's desire to keep on going with propane buses, first of all?
So, there, there was something I also saw come in, um. For charging and fueling infrastructure discretionary grant program.
I'm, I'm applying for that.
We are.
The chart, because we did put in, uh, conduits for the bus garage. Or the maintenance facility, I like calling it maintenance facility, because when I call it bus garage, people told we're parking our buses inside.
Yeah.
It's basically a maintenance garage. Uh, so I'm, I'm gonna apply for the E V charging stations there. Uh, there's supposedly grants coming out for electric vehicles. For schools like trucks and vans. Uh, right now, I've been talking to a lot of districts that have tried electric buses, they love them. But they lose power very fast going up hills, they don't last. If they're flat, they, they can do a full run or whatever, but if you're going up hills, like I think Potts will try them for three months and they have to have them towed back because the. Hills, a lot of hills, so.
At the, um, at, at the new garage now, there, there is a propane station though?
No, there's no propane, we have a tanker coming in each time. I'm also gonna apply for a propane fueling station, it can't go there because there's a thousand-foot rule. Uh, but there is a spot on the other, or thousand-foot rule for residential, there's a spot on the other side of Awatton. Where we, you know, if you come up and go around up the top, there's a nice little flat area with electric meters and stuff, that could actually. Fit within the thousand-foot rule. We'd stop to go to the township, but that's a possibility for putting a propane fueling station.
Yeah.
If we get a grant.
Yeah, so that, th- this two-point-five billion-dollar infrastructure program, the charging and fueling would cover. Awards for propane fueling infrastructure.
Correct, so I am applying for that.
So that is something we, we are looking to.
That and also the electric, because I think the electric buses will get there. But, you know, we have pickup trucks that we're talking about replacing in the next couple of years, it's in the. Maintenance plan, we could always go electric on pickup trucks, cause that, we can put in any building, but also. Vans, we have a lot of short van runs, you know, Pottstown and, and other districts, we could probably look at electric vans too. If it's economical, because the, the price is a, is a lot higher. But right now, the van market is, is not there because they're still trying to fill the truck market. And they use the same engines for the vans as they do trucks, and there's a more demand for pickup trucks than there are for, for electric vans.
How does this affect the budget for next year?
Uh, I have a hundred and five thousand in, for an increase in lease, uh. Right now, with the grant, we'd be looking at less than a hundred thousand per bus and four buses, so. It'd be about a ninety-eight thousand dollar for a lease, so it'd actually, with decrease of a couple thousand, that's based on today's rates.
When are the feds talking about doing away with propane? So we can have buses that can't climb hills.
No, I mean electric. Propane, you can go up the hills. That's natural gas, Evans, Bob, I think you're talking about.
Yeah, I mean, U P S, the, I think in all the cities, they put their, all their U P S vehicles on propane. And a lot of the, the, uh. The public transit's have propane on their buses too. It's like quieter and less emissions, you know.
I think when we did, uh, some of the initial examination of propane versus diesel. You know, we saw some other things that were interesting too, I mean, in addition to all the things in terms of. The, the comfort of the ride, the quiet ride, the easy startup in the winter. Um, but we also recognized that there were some benefits associated with maintenance.
Right.
And it takes, uh, fewer ga- uh, quarts of oil and less, you know, less costs associated with oil changes and so forth, less frequently.
Right.
And I think there were some other maintenance issues, things too that were, were much better, but I mean, obviously, it's better for our students too. I mean, when you consider the emissions, uh, in diesel and compare that to propane, there's a real benefit in terms of health. With twenty-five percent of our population roughly having asthma, you know, any particulate in the air is a, is an aggravating factor, so. This is, uh, propane's, is, it makes a lot of sense now, especially with the, with all the incentives that are being provided. It makes a lot of sense.
And, and propane, you can actually. Electric, I don't know, anyone that even got electric buses that, we use them for athletics or other events because there's no. Fast charging for a bus, there's fast charging for cars. Propane, you can find fueling stations. You might have to go out of the way, but you can find propane fueling stations throughout the state.
Yeah.
In certain areas.
Yeah, I, I just, I don't think the infrastructure's there for, for electric. For what we need, but what, what would be the, uh, the difference in, uh, in cost between diesel and propane?
Actually, with the thirty-seven thousand dollar reimbursement, it's cheaper.
Cheaper for propane?
For propane, because, uh, the price differential between the propane buses and the diesel buses are about twelve thousand dollars right now. Flat out without the, 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 uh, reimbursement or the grand reimbursement.
That's for cost of the bus, what about fuel, monthly fuel?
Uh, well, they've been about the same because of the price of diesel went up.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
You know, if, if we'd actually be able to s- decrease the price of our propane if we didn't have the wet fuel, like all wet fuels. Bring in a tanker twice a week, if we had actually storage.
We had our own storage, it was.
A lot cheaper. You know, it's like having it delivered to your home or going and filling up a propane tank, it's a lot more expensive.
Uh, Brian, what do our drivers think about the difference between the two, those who've driven both kinds?
I, I, I haven't heard complaints, so usually that's, I, if you hear complaints now. Uh, uh, the mechanic's complaint is, everything has to be done back at the, um. Cellar, which I think the local depot for, you know, recalls and stuff is, uh, in Harrisburg. You know, there was a couple recalls. You know, there was a couple recalls in the the previous two purchases go of of propane because. I think they had rusting out of the lines, uh, because one thing about propane, it it's different from natural gas. Propane has. Well, it's liquid propane, but it has water or something, a condensation fills up in your lines, can rust out. I guess with the recall, they changed the lines because there are possibly rusting fittings, you know. But from my understanding, they're getting better, you know, just like any car, they find mistakes and fix them. But that was the only complaint I heard add is if it's under recall, I gotta take it out to Harrisburg. I can't take it down to to uh Exton, well. What's that, half hour difference?
So I I think it was uh it was mentioned before that the propane buses don't seem to last as long. Was that based on that comment?
That was based on. Hearing a school district that put in all propane buses back in two thousand twelve.
Okay.
Before they started having problems with the engines, like a hundred twenty, a hundred thirty thousand miles. For diesel engines, you don't have problems to two hundred fifty plus thousand miles.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think that has to do with, you know, it it's like if you buy a house with a propane heater or a. Uh, natural gas heater, your heater rusts out faster with propane because the the moisture in the in the fuel. You know, will create rust and. And I think that's what the problems were. Uh, hopefully, they're getting better, but. You know, that that was, you know, back in, I was down Chester in two thousand twelve, but we could have gotten all new buses. Propane buses by the federal government, a lot of schools took advantage of that, but. There's also a fight with the public because back then they had a a notion that they were sitting on bombs, you know, and they didn't want them, so we actually. Lost them, you know, it's, I don't know why, but that's that's what the feeling was. You have a propane tank on your bus, it's a bomb, it's, you know. It's probably safer than a gas tank because you can't puncture a propane tank like you can puncture a gas tank. It's come a long way since then, but yeah, the the ones that they're talking about was like Lower Marion or one of the the. Schools around King of Prussia put a whole fleet in, you know, because they got a lot of federal money at the time and it was. You know, half of it was paid for. But things have come a long way since then. But their their complaint was they started seeing engine problems, a hundred thirty, a hundred forty thousand. Normally, you don't see that with diesel to two hundred fifty. So thousand miles.
So that was that was about ten years ago when you you were seeing those issues. You haven't. Experienced hearing any any new issues that recently with with propane buses?
There's a big pushback around that time.
Yeah.
And then people are just buying, you know, sporadically. And I'm sure you guys hear the same thing with the electric buses, you know, when they come out, they're gonna. First one out gets to uh take care of all the problems.
I I mean, it. Seems to make sense to me, the propane buses are the way to go, especially if we're talking about lower cost.
Yeah, that was just surprising because like when I first came here, I didn't recommend propane. Because there wasn't any grants, so like the month after. You approved it. Ended up being twenty thousand dollars cheaper for the two buses because the grants came out. I applied for them, got them, went. Called up Dave and I said, yeah, well, guess what? They were cheaper.
What what would be the lease term that we would shoot for for these?
Uh, doing everything on a five-year and it's a dollar buyout, so he owned it.
Okay, lease to buy and after five.
Do the same thing as he did last year.
Yeah.
You know, that was our plan and and the and the. Projections we have over five years coming out to that, you know, four hundred fifty to five hundred thousand dollar range and then we'll just be. Leases come off and new leases going on, but you're still on the buses there for five years.
Okay.
You just don't have the title of first line.
And Brian, um, how many miles in a school year? You you talked about the propane having engine problems at a hundred and twenty, diesel not until two fifty. What 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 kind of time period is that good for?
Okay, let let me put it this way, our two thousand seven buses that are gonna be dropping off state reimbursement. Total miles, we started at a hundred sixty-one thousand miles. Uh, this past year, we put thirty-six hundred on, a hundred forty thousand, we put forty-eight hundred on. Hundred forty thousand, we put seventeen hundred miles on. One has ninety-eight thousand, we put thirty-eight hundred miles on, so it's. To get there, it's. Almost fifteen years the way we're driving, but if you're in a rural district like Borre Town or up in the middle of state. You know, you're probably putting triple the amount of miles we are. You know, the other nice thing is our our. Maintenance garage is centered in the township, so they're going out. Um, and we talked about this last time, so our our deadhead miles, they call it, miles without students are are less. You know, because where we're located.
Okay, thank you.
Brian, do you need to know this now or can we move this to the next Cal with the numbers?
I I would move it to the next Cal with numbers. I I I just wanted to make sure because I I'm gonna start the uh. Grant process and the applications right now.
Okay.
But I'll get the final number for the the. Propane buses uh for the next Cal to to approve purchasing and, you know, start their purchase. And also what I expect to get on the grants.
Would would you be able to to also show or get a quote for diesel just as a comparison?
Oh, yeah, yeah. And what I'm finding out is, you know, most of these bus companies have gone on to Sourcewell or Co-Stars or KPN and. When they're, if I put out for bid, advertise all, I get the same price because they, you know, when they. Bid it for the state, they can't give less than anyone else. So I'm th- this year, I'm just saying, let's go with Sourcewell on the state contracts, it's already pre-bid.
Any other discussion?
Mister Quinner, did that answer your questions on leasing and buses? Okay, thank you.
Alright, Dr. Herring, that is it for my committee report.
Thank you, Mister Mal. Personnel, Mrs. Schaper.
Thank you, Dr. Herring. Um, up for discussion tonight, we have um items A through E. We'll start with resignations. We have administrative staff, item A, and certificated staff, item A and B, and support staff, item A. Any discussion? Moving on to items B, appointments. We have administrative staff, items A and B, certificated staff, items A and B, and support staff, item A. Any discussion?
Yeah, just uh with the administrative staff on item A for Chris, then I think that normally shows up under my. Uh, committee report, but I I think that's just designating her as the treasurer and and uh stating the the yearly stipends for.
Yeah, if you uh go back to the PSBA calendars, every. December, you pick the.
Yep.
Election and then every.
Yeah, the.
May, you.
PA school code says you have to.
The treasurer for your term, then every fourth May, you appoint the reappoint or appoint the board secretary. And by the end of June, you have the next one to also be putting that on the agenda. You also have to appoint the solicitor for the following school year.
Yeah, yeah, so I I don't know if that's if that should be in the personnel committee or if that should come out of that and be somewhere. I I I don't know if it makes.
I always put it, I I put things that involve money because I guess I I I could normally put that on the personnel.
Okay, that's fine with me.
Thank you. Any other discussion for appointments? Next on the agenda is item C, change of status for support staff, item A. Item D, leave of absences. We have four listed here. Any discussion? And under items, item E, we have extended school year and extended contracts. Um, they are all listed items one through four and the contracts are attached. Any discussion for extended contracts for summer two thousand twenty-three? Extended contracts, secretary of summer twenty twenty-three? Support staff, I'm sorry, extended school year staff, and then transportation employee summer work list. No discussion and all five should be moved to the voting meeting, and that is it for personnel committee.
Thank you. Policy committee, Doctor Hamburger.
Thanks, Doctor Herring. Um, on the agenda, we'll have one policy that will be up for second reading. Already been reviewed previously at our uh prior Cal and um. And uh have already been approved for first reading. And then there are three that are up for uh first reading, and I'm gonna ask Mrs. Harris to uh kind of walk us through some of the uh. Rationale for the uh changes in these three policies. One has to do with, it's a board policy related to board operations. Uh, has to do with meetings, zero zero six, and then there are two that are under attendance. One has to do with eligibility of non-resident students. And the final one, two oh four, has to do with student attendance. So if we could just um. Mrs. Harris, just go through briefly those rationale for those three changes and maybe what they constitute.
Thank you, Doctor Hamburger. Uh, so first one, policy zero zero six, which governs uh board meetings and board meeting procedures. There are updates to that policy. It was largely revamped as a result of Act sixty-five, twenty twenty-one. Um, to comply with the Sunshine Act amendments, um, and there's updates in there related to. Uh, timelines for posting public agendas, which you're already practicing and engaging in. I'm just updating the policy to reflect that. Um, and the procedures for public comments. We also updated the order of business. In that policy, uh, there was some outdated language in there regarding names of committees that uh you're no longer utilizing in the order. In which those committees are presented at the committee of the whole and at the voting meeting. Um, and then uh policy uh two oh two and two oh four were updated to include language. Um, regarding students who are experiencing educational instability. If you recall, last month, we had another policy that was updated, uh, that included that language. We have a couple more to follow that we'll need to update as well that will uh now include that language. Uh, the one policy that I was hoping we could just have a little bit of discussion on was policy two oh two. Um, regarding eligibility of non-resident students. So there's uh some language in our current policy. Um, that is what you would call local language, so it's not something that was recommended by PSBA, but. Districts will often add local language if there's a scenario that's very specific to their community and district that they want to include in policy. Um, and in this particular policy, that local language is regarding non-resident owners of business properties. So there's a section in there that essentially allows for um. Owners of business properties that are located within the school district who pay real estate taxes. To have up to two children and their family attend Exeter at a reduced tuition rate of fifty percent. Um, in asking around uh with some folks, it sounds like that language was added at some point in time. Perhaps as an incentive uh for business owners to come to Exeter. In the three years that I've been here, I've not gotten any requests. Um, to exercise uh this part of the policy, tuition requests come through my office in the district. Um, and then uh they go to uh Doctor Haller for approval. Uh, again, we haven't received any requests related to this language. Um, I'm leaning toward a recommendation to the board to remove this section of the policy at this point. For a couple of reasons, um, one, we haven't had any requests, but um in addition to that, um, enrollment is uh. Sort of an unstable construct at this point. That's not unique to Exeter. That's uh everywhere in all school districts. Um, enrollment projections are not as um easily projected as they used to be. Um, and I think uh gone are the days where we're um just willing to take on additional students, even if it is at. You know, um, a cost and some revenue to the district. Um, I just don't see us utilizing um this section of the policy very much. Um, and I'm worried, you know, given, like I said, enrollment instability, that um we don't want to sort of. Create any more scenarios where we have a lack of predictability around enrollment. So that's my recommendation to you, but of course, it's up to you to discuss and decide whether or not as a board. You want to leave that in there for now or whether you would like to go ahead and remove it?
That was placed in there as a result. Of a businessman coming and asking about it. Because he wanted his kid to ride along with him when he came to school. We were applauded, probably the only thing during my tenure with the board that the township applauded us. Was for that. And the county, um, Pam. Thought that was the greatest thing since sliced butter. Now, if it's not being used, fine. It can sit there in black and white and nobody's gonna spend any money on it, fine, but uh. It's just another. Well, at the time that uh we enacted it, it was because. A businessman came and asked about it and was not going to relocate hi- his business here if we didn't. So it doesn't hurt anything if it sits there and nobody's using it, but uh it's there if we can uh use it.
Uh, just curious, why um was there a reason the owner didn't want to move to Exeter? To be a homeowner?
No, he 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 had several businesses spread out and uh. He, at the time, he wanted to have his child ride with him to work and the business was one where he was gonna be there. In time for the school schedule and uh. They just wanted him to come. I'm sure he's gone by now. He's probably. You know, owns all the companies or something.
Yeah, I I guess what I was ju- just saying, it it this is, this language is for non-resident owners of business. Like, I mean, if he. Wanted to, he could have, the person could have become a resident of the of the of the township of the district.
Point was that one of our, the reasons that our taxes are so high is because we do not have any. Commercial base, and if.
Sure.
This would entice someone to relocate their business. To purchase the land and the property, to pay taxes on the business. And uh he just wants to bring his kid with him to work in the morning and drop him off at school. I don't see where it hurts us. We're not, you know, we're we're gaining through the taxes that we gain from the business. And in that case, the individual was not gonna open a shop here and uh unless that happened, so. That's why it was put in there.
So just to, just to verify, the business was not officially open. Or in the township at the time this was presented to the board?
No.
It was a prospect that came.
Was in his planning on opening the business here, so.
Yeah, I I I'd have a sort of a different take on it right now. I mean, number one is that obviously we haven't seen any benefit from having this in. I just want to remind the board too that um the last time we had a uh an Act ninety-three. Um, agreement, we had a request from our administrative team to add a similar kind of a. A process for our administrators. Actually, it would have allowed them to, if they lived outside of the school district, to allow their kids to come. To the school district at a either reduced or free tuition. I forget exactly what we had contemplated. Maybe it was fifty percent. And we said no. And the reason we said no, and it was based upon legal advice we received from our uh legal counsel, was that. Um, this kind of a stip- this kind of a uh component in a policy has become unpopular because you cannot say. No to the student coming in to the school district. In other words, you can't discriminate. The student comes in with complex special education needs, we talked about, a student who may come in wi- with a hundred thousand dollar year price tag. Um, if that's the case here, we can't say no based upon that situation, so I think. I'm I'm looking to counsel here, but I think that was the rationale for that. Um, sort of um aspect of the Act ninety-three agreement that we we uh we uh pulled out. And I think the same holds here for this uh for this component, so that would be an extension of the con- conversation, I think, that Mrs. Harris had is. There are some negatives to this as well.
The um, the trend across the state is for school districts to not accept tuition students under any rationale. Um, fewer and fewer are doing it because they've had experiences where they have situations like that. Um, where it becomes a very costly endeavor to take a student. You can't deny a student because they happen to be costly. Um, the way this is worded here, I, you could have somebody who's a one percent business owner with a very expensive. Complex need child and say, you know, I want my kid, they're already in in a. Approved private school someplace at a very expensive rate, and now you're gonna pay for it because you have to, and you can't say no because my child has needs.
Yeah, I I think that's really an important aspect of it. I, you know, I I do hear Mister Quinner um. Uh, about being able to attract commercial business here. I I just don't think this is the way to do it. It worked once and it sounds like we did it just as a favor for one person, but.
And I paid tuition to come to first grade here, my dad did, so.
Good to know. So that's where I stand.
Uh so I I would, I would like to recommend as as um committee chair that we. Uh we we delete this this uh language and if there's a. Um if there's disagreement with that recommendation, we can resolve that, I think, at the uh through a vote for first reading. And then have further discussion and then if it if if it has support at first reading, then we can, then we can include it, but I. That would be my suggestion, uh Mrs. Harris, that we we line this out in 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 for the. For the um for that, for the meeting.
Got it.
Um question, um Mrs. Harris, if if we were to remove this. And and Bill Gates were to come to Exeter Township and say, I want to put up a new uh uh structure for my foundation. Or business or whatever, could we then reinstate it if we saw lots of dollar signs?
You can do policy revisions at any time, but again, I would refer to legal counsel that it's not currently considered a best practice. And so. You certainly have the authority to revise your policy at any time, um doing it for a one-time favor. It's permissible.
Would would we end up in court?
Just a, just a.
All right, let let me rephrase it. Could we end up in court?
You can always end up in court.
I guess.
But there would have to be an interesting set of facts for that to happen.
You can indict a ham sandwich, right? Thank you.
Um and and just wanted to mention, um Mrs. Harris, was that pretty much all that you had to comment on?
Yes.
Were there any questions for board members in terms of the three uh new policies?
I I had a question around policy zero zero six with the uh uh additions to the agenda on page three. I I just want to get some further clarification on some of the additional points that were added there. One was. Business arising within twenty four hours prior to the meeting, uh being able to. Sounds like approved de minimis uh items in nature. That do not involve the expenditure of funds or or entering into a contract agreement. It sounds like the same thing. Is a little bit down further from that business raised by residents or taxpayers during a meeting. Um same same kind of language is there if the matter is de minimis in nature and does not involve the expenditures of funds. I I guess to me that, I'm just trying to understand what what are those situations that we're trying to. Allow.
Uh well, I I'm not sure of the situations that is allowing, but that's all statutory language.
It is. Does uh by adding that language, does does that um mean we do not need to include? An amending agenda item within our agenda or?
No, you still need to.
We still need that in addition to this.
Yeah, if you hit the hyperlink on that on that policy, you'll see it, it'll take you. Hit the hyperlink, it'll take you directly to this um, that same language in 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 statute.
Okay, thank you. Just seems, it sounds nefarious in nature, that's why.
Uh also, I like to say that in each of these three policies, there's a reference to um administrative regulations. Uh and uh the ARs are things that the uh. The district will commit or the administration will commit to addressing, I think, over the summer and. Mrs. Harris told me that, you know, there's a, there'll be time dedicated over the summer to to help flush out some of these administrative regulations.
That is correct. The administrative team is very excited about that work. They've already uh been forewarned that they will be having Wednesday work sessions. Largely dedicated to administrative regulations. Look at how, look at them all smiling back there.
It sounds somewhat threatening, but uh we 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 committed that um instead of doing. Instead of doing like a a two-day or three-day retreat, that our time would be better served uh working in. Uh group sessions on um items that would best serve. Uh the the school district and the teachers and our students and that was, we have a list. And uh that was one of the items that need to be addressed.
Thank you. And then the other thing is uh zero zero six, which is actually uh a board operating guideline, is really not. Subject to an administrative regulation, but it is, it does come with guidelines that were developed by uh PSBA and recommended. And and we as a board should be looking at those guidelines because they actually provide some of the uh. You know, some of the more uh um important language associated with the operation of that or the implementation of that policy. Uh so I'm gonna uh work with the uh my other two um policy members of the board and and share with them that. Operating guideline and we'll come back to the board with that recommendation. I'm not sure, Mr. Montane, how um. How board operating guidelines are ultimately adopted, you know, whether that requires a formal vote of the board. Or whether that's something that the policy committee can simply, I mean, is there any?
There there's no requirement to have guidelines, so I would, I would say that it doesn't require a vote. Um certainly, it's can be something that is reviewed and, I mean, you're not. You might want to just sort of, I guess you could adopt it just like you do a policy, but there's no requirement to it. Also, would you send me that? The PSBA's guidelines um for me to look at, but. It it's sort of, it for yourselves, it's it's just your own guardrails. So you can just have them, you can amend. Uh a lot of times, uh school districts will include their AR, an AR link. To the policy. So you might put, and and if you do that, you are effectively. Telling the public, you're giving the public notice of what those guidelines are. The difference is, you don't have, if you gonna, if you are going to change the guidelines or change an AR. The practice everywhere is that that doesn't require a vote. That's more because it's administrative.
Okay, so it's pretty much like ARs, the 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 operating guidelines for the board or like ARs in that they don't. They're developed by that entity and in case of the ARs, it's developed by the administration. We don't get involved in that. And the administration really doesn't have to get involved with our board operating guidelines and there's no vote taken. Okay, I'll send you that. That uh that guide for this particular one. So uh in regard to the uh uh to the voting meeting. All of, all four policies, two for uh first read- or three for first reading and one for second reading will be on the agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Hamburger.
Thank you.
Okay, um next would be comment, comments by the public, but no one signed up. So um we are going to be moving forward the following items to May fifteenth voting agenda. The meeting minutes. The food service budget. Item five A. Five C, D, E, F, G, and H. Item six A and B. Item seven A, B, C, D, E. And item eight A. Okay, at this point, are there any board members that would like to be heard? No? Okay. If nothing else, please note, our next voting meeting will be held on Monday. May fifteen, twenty twenty three, the day prior to the primaries.